Yeah, well, I will say I've lived to all the places in the Commonwealth and this is the cheapest place I've ever been. It really is. It's the cheapest.
Well. This meeting, this is a joint public hearing with the Richlands Town Council and the Richlands Planning Commission. Welcome everyone. We have an agenda before us.
We have an agenda before us for the joint public hearing. Okay? And first off, let's have an invocation. Please rise for this. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity again to meet on behalf of the citizens of the town of Richlands. We pray for your guidance. We pray for the blessings of the day. We're grateful and we hope that your will and not ours be done. Amen. Does say the pledge?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we're now at this, we're opening the first public hearing, which is, we have it titled number one, the rezoning of 1809 Third Street. I will ask, are members of the planning commission present?
Any planning commission? Yeah, I've got one right here.
Okay. Would he or she please come in? Barry? Okay. Have a seat, Barry. You can join us. This is a joint public hearing. Any other members of the planning commission present? Do you know Jeff, are they going to be present? Okay. And then we have two members of council present for the public hearing. Okay. So this is a hearing on the rezoning at 1809 Third Street and I will defer to Jeff perhaps as the representative to the planning commission or to Barry to brief us on what the request is. Can you help us?
May I say something first?
Yes. It's about the public hearing?
Yes. Since we don't have a quorum, I move that, that we adjourn this meeting.
Doug, we're not in session yet. This is a public hearing.
Okay. You've not called it, so, okay.
Okay. So are you, is anyone present from the planning commission to brief us on this? John, can you update us on this, on this request, please?
The 1809.
1809 Third Street.
This is a property that is currently zoned B2 general business.
Hey, John, may I ask, could you move over here so we can hear you? Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
This is a property that is currently zoned B2 for general business. They've requested it be zoned M1/B2, so that was for, up for consideration to allow it to be used for the M1 manufacturing designation as well as the B2, but based on our discussion with our legal, our staff recommendation would be to allow it to be M1 at this time and then later on they want the additional current regulations in place that we'd have to have a discussion on that at a later time.
Okay. So the request is to change this property at 1809 Third Street from a B2, which is general business, to an M1, which is general industrial.
The original request was an M1/B2 to have it as kind of a hybrid or overlay, but we've worked on our zoning, at this time, I think, just allowing it as the M1 would meet their needs but would allow us to work on our zoning to allow the overlay at a later time.
So the person who's requested this has requested it in writing to just for an M1?
No, it's the overlap, but we, our zoning doesn't, doesn't allow that.
Okay. I follow you. Thank you, John. Okay. Is this the magic mark properties that we have a general understanding?
I believe it is.
Okay. Make sure we have a general understanding. Sometimes addresses are confusing. Thank you. So is there anyone who would like to speak on this matter to the members of the planning commission, which would be Barry Alley or to Jeff Hurst, who is council's representative to the commission or to any member of council? Before I move on, I'll leave that open for just a minute, please. We have a sign up sheet for 105 Augusta Avenue only. When these people sign this, let me just read your names. Don't come forward. I'm trying to read it. Krista Ramirez, Jeff Casey, Michael Witt. If I make a mistake, please forgive me. Michelle Witt, Keith Mullins, Summer Minor, Morgan Earp, Carol Osborne, Jessica Schrader, Daniel Schrader, I guess, and Violet, Violet. I don't know, were you aware you were signing just for the Augusta Avenue?
No.
Okay. I'll, I'll go ahead and call. So is there anyone on this, anyone here present in this room who would like to speak on the rezoning request for 1809 Third Street? Okay. I've had two calls for that, so apparently there's no discussion. Is there anything else you would like to say about it, John?
I didn't.
Jeff, do you need to add anything?
No. That's basically what we were talking about.
Okay. Anything for you, Barry? Okay. If there's no one with any particular concerns about this, I will close this particular piece of the public hearing here in number one, close. Okay. Next, the open public hearing for matter number two. This is the rezoning for 105 Augusta Avenue, 105 Augusta Avenue, and I will ask the town manager for, what is the request, please?
They've requested this parcel be rezoned from M1 general industry to R2 for general residential use.
May I ask who the requesters are?
Uh, I don't have the names with me.
Okay. Can you provide that for us at some later time?
I couldn't.
Okay. Thank you. Barry, do you have anything to add on this? Do you know who the requesters are?
I can't remember.
What name is it?
Augusta Avenue. Okay. I know where it is, but I'm not sure exactly which property it is.
Before you consider it, shouldn't you have the names?
Well, I would like to, but the names are available right now. I'll ask for audience input. Pardon? I'll ask for audience input. Okay. So is, there's people who've signed up, you're on this sheet for 105 Augusta Avenue. You might not have been aware that that's what it says, so let's make sure that these people are recognized as wanting to speak on this particular issue, which is 105 Augusta Avenue, requested to be moved from an M1, which is industrial, to an R2, which is general residential. Okay? And I do believe, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, or John, or Barry, this has become a mixed zone area and the history of it is, is industrial and residential and those people who live there might not even know they're in an M1. Is that correct? And those people who also live there might not know they're in an R2. So I'm assuming that's a very dangerous thing. This is an effort by the planning commission to be consistent with zoning. Is that correct?
That's fairly correct.
Fairly correct?
Well, pretty accurate.
Okay.
Because, well, that's what we talked about in part of our discussion to get a bid to update the zoning.
Right.
Were for situations and neighborhoods.
To be consistent.
About like this, to be consistent, yeah.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay. Let me read this list to make sure. I have a feeling maybe some of you are on this list who want to speak on other issues. So let me read it to be sure, so that no one feels left out. We have Krista Ramirez, and if I mispronounce them, please accept my apologies. Krista Ramirez, Jeff Casey, Michelle Witt, Keith Mullins, Summer Minor, Morgan Earp, Carol Osborne, Jessica Schrader, Daniel Schrader, and Violet, I'm sorry, I can't read your last name, Violet. Anyone of those people for, to speak on the 105 Augusta Avenue rezoning request from an M1 to an R2?
Ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Come up. Thank you. Come to the podium. Thank you, ma'am. And would you mind to state your name and address for the benefit of the record?
Krista Ramirez, and I live at 217 Rutledge Street in Bristol, Tennessee.
Okay. Thank you.
I am the requestor on this property.
Okay. Thank you.
My understanding is that it is industrial and what's currently there is not livable, so I'm trying to get that tore down, and I'm wanting to move something else in. I can't do that unless it's rezoned.
Like a mobile home or something like that?
Yes.
Okay. When you said move it in, it didn't sound like build on.
Right.
I just had a question. That's my question. Thank you. Anything else you want to report on?
Well, this area, there's, within about a two block span, 80% of this area is used as residential. I don't know what it's zoned at. So 20% of it is business and I just need it to be residential.
Okay. So that's your request?
And I don't see any reason for it not to be with 80% of it being, you know, families living in that area.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Anything else you would like to say?
No, I think that's it.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your input and to know who the requestor is.
Thank you.
Nice to have you. You're welcome. Anyone else who would like to speak on this property? Last call. That being the last call, I will close this public hearing. This is hearing number two. Okay. Now, okay, so the planning commission can recess for any recommendations that they have. We have one member of the planning commission present, and Jeff, would you gentlemen like to go in there and talk about it? We'll give you just a few minutes and then you come back. And if you can't reach a decision because you don't have enough people, we're not, a quorum is not required for a public hearing, you may do that. I would suggest you do that. Thank you. We'll give you five minutes. Thank you.
Mayor, during this period, we will have four sign up sheets for each of the four budget related ordinances that will be part of the next budget public hearing. So if anybody's interested in speaking on the budget, they will need to sign up on the specific item they would like to speak on, whether it's one or all four.
Okay. Thank you, John. So we have sign up sheets for the various topics that are coming up, and they are the real estate and personal property tax, the cigarette tax, the water, sewer, garbage, and electric rates, and then the general budget. So if you would like to speak on that, I think Connie's taking sign up sheets and we'll have a five minute recess. Thank you.
Order, thank you. We have it for us. We had two public hearings, brief though they were, for the Planning Commission. I will defer to Jeff Hurst, who is the Council's representative to the Planning Commission. Mr. Hurst?
Yes, well, what we decided to do in lieu of not having enough of the Planning Commission members here tonight, we're going to call a special meeting on Monday to have something, a recommendation for next Tuesday's continuing meeting.
Do you know what time Jeff said the public?
Seven o'clock.
At seven P. M. here at the Town Hall?
Uh huh.
Okay, so the Planning Commission will have a meeting here at the Town Hall at seven P. M. this coming Monday, the eighteenth. Is that correct? I believe so. I believe it's the eighteenth, Monday, the eighteenth. We'll make sure, please. And the clerk will record that. Thank you.
Monday, the eighteenth. Yes. Monday, the eighteenth.
At seven P. M.
At seven P. M.
Town Hall. This is a meeting of the Planning Commission. Thank you, Jeff.
Sure.
Okay, moving along with the public hearing, we have Roman numeral seven. This is an open public hearing. It's called number three. Proposed 2022-2023 Budget and Rates. Okay, the first one that will be considered, we're taking them in order, and I'm going to hold up the sign-up sheets. This is for real estate and personal property tax, and it is ordinance 2022-0401, and it's on real estate and personal property tax. We have people to speak here, and we do not have official time limits on this, but I'll ask for your respect and consideration for everyone's time and resources, and so we shall move on. All right, first, on real estate and personal property is Laura Malo. Ms. Malo, would you please come to the podium, and if you don't mind, would you give your name and address for the benefit of the clerk?
Laura Malo, 262 Linwood Drive in Richlands. Last year, we saw the highest rate increases in the history of Richlands. We went through a pandemic and are now seeing extremely high rates of inflation. Along with everything else rising, so did our poverty level. In the last year, we saw the poverty level in Richlands rise from 23% to 28%, according to the U. S. Census Bureau. I do not believe that this is all because of what's happening to us nationally. This is in part due to the burden the council has continued to place on the back of the citizens by increasing the taxes, fees, and utility rates. The town should be here to make life better for everyone, not just a select few. We've seen the success of people in Richlands over the last year, but it's time to expand that circle to every citizen, not just friends and family. The council shouldn't get to choose who benefits from their tax dollars. That opportunity should be given to every citizen, and one way to do this is to stop raising the taxes, fees, and utility rates until this budget is under control and there is accountability for what's being spent and where this money is going. You guys aren't here to make these decisions for us. You're here to represent the citizen. As I've said before, in a representative democracy, elected officials are servants of the people, not the other way around. Winston Churchill said, "For a nation to tax itself into prosperity is like a man standing in a bucket and trying to lift himself by the handle," and I happen to agree.
Thank you. Please, I must ask, there'll be lots of comments here, and they're everyone welcome. This particular public hearing is on real estate and personal property, so, correct me if I'm wrong, just to try to clarify for all of the speakers, real estate is talking about land, and personal property about like your motor vehicles and things like that. Is that generally right? I just want to make sure we're good. Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Okay, next is Kenny Boyd. Mr. Boyd, do you mind to step to the podium and state your name and address for the record?
It's Kenneth Boyd, 388 Plantation Drive, Richlands, Virginia.
Yes, sir.
Um, I know we're talking about the real estate, and what I can't get past is why do we have to pay county and town? We should only be taxed once, not twice, on the same stuff. Property, vehicles, everything we own, we're taxed twice. We're penalized for living in town. It should be an honor for us to live in town, do business in town. We got to do something about, we either pay the county, we either pay the town, or you guys split it with an equal rate that people in the county's paying. It's, it's, it should not be paying two separate rates or two separate taxes for the same thing. Comments from you guys? I mean, it, nobody else has to do this.
I don't know that, what my personal view is, not to side with you or against you at all, is I'm just hearing what you're saying.
Correct. I mean, they don't do this in Abingdon, Tassau, different places. I mean, it's just unheard of. And on top of that, with the power rates and on top of everything else, we just keep getting killed here. We need to do something about, separate us either from the county, or let us be county, or let us be town, and that kind of thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd, very much. Okay. Next, is the microphone on up here? I couldn't hear very well. Is it on at this podium?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Blake. Okay, good deal. Thank you. All right, next is Wanda Low. Wanda, would you mind to come to the podium and state your name and address for the benefit of the clerk? Thank you.
Wanda Low, 292 Plantation Drive. First, I'd like to say I'm so disappointed in this council that they didn't show up tonight. We have one appointed, one elected, two flew the coop, and I don't know where the other one is. And on something like the budget, it is a shame that we cannot have representation here tonight to hear the people's voices. We have been told in the last meeting, I was just going back over those minutes, that the town manager had suggested that you turn this all down to three minutes, whether we were scheduled or not scheduled, also to shorten the council from talking and not speak so much. And it seems like you're really trying to shut the town down, shut the people up, do what you want to do, and don't listen to us. And I know from firsthand, by having a problem in Hidden Valley, that this council did not do anything to help me in that. I have spent over $10,000 doing something that they should have done. And with this new COVID money that should have been used for some infrastructure, you didn't allocate nothing for that. But all we hear is a million-dollar soccer field. I'm upset with that, and that supposedly came from you who's appointed. If our appointed people, if the people that's appointed does not want to represent the people, then you don't need to sit on the council, and that's all I have for this right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Wanda, thank you very much. I will ask, and I do understand we all have different views, and I respect yours and everyone's, I will ask that citizens try to speak generally. Thank you. We're, okay, let's move on, shall we? Thank you. Miki Smith, Miki? Is Miki here? Miki Smith? Matt Catherine's mom, come on up. Am I right, Miki? Yes, state your name and address, please.
My given name is Marguerite Smith. Everybody knows me as Miki. First of all, I really want to title myself as miscellaneous, due to the fact that I feel like, are you hearing me?
Yes, I can hear you, Ms. Smith.
I might need a stepstool. Recently, I was very sad, and I can't say I was really shocked because of actions that were taken by the council on the budget and the rise in our living expenses in this town, the taxes on our properties, and the electrical increases and everything else. I was really sad, but mainly because the value of the citizen's voice seems to be in a pits. At least that is what was published in the Voice paper when one citizen was called, her concerns, I believe, were called miscellaneous. There was a 10-minute tirade about one of the citizens, same citizen, and it seemed like she had no credible voice in this town. Is that how we treat our citizens? Shocking and sad. I assume that business was recorded at these meetings. Was that, was that business? Now, my question is, does anyone believe they have a credible voice at these meetings? Or will we be verbally attacked or belittled for what we speak? This is America. Please let us have a voice. For several years, citizens have been trusting and allowed some mismanagement of our town going on, and I'll speak of that later. And now we're having all these increases, and we don't know why. No explanation of why we have to increase everything. I know we have some outlandish salaries going on now. We're adding new departments, and I learned on this agenda, we got a new finance officer. More power to them, but is this on the backs of the burdens of their citizens? If you need an example of mismanagement, I'll give you one. Recent, just recently, there was a bleeding in theft in the recreation department. Now, I remember attending a council meeting when Mr. Ralliff tried to get the council to investigate the losses in that department. But was he hurt? As usual, this was a hands-off of my special little petty interest by some of the council. This is just something that came to my mind, and I think you'll all remember it. So why suddenly? Do we need, you know, all these increases, these terrible, is there terribly dire needs in this town? Can't you find where there might be some other bleeding in the budgets? I cannot believe you don't see the empty businesses that are leaving, and the stores, and the for-sale signs in the town of Richlands city limits? I cannot live in this town if I solely had to depend on my monthly income. These past two years have been trying for everyone, yes. Don't you think that at least our town government should be more compassionate, more loving, more caring? Let's try to relieve some burdens, not make more. Friends, these reckless spending and waste of our money, already coming from struggling people, is a blight on Richlands. Loss of confidence or hope is sad. Is mismanagement or non-management of this town's business the cause? I don't know, but I do know when there's a problem, you get at the root, you root it out, you get rid of the cause. You don't try to cover it up or smooth it out and hope it'll go away. You know, that's unproductive. You each know who is hurting by these increases. Families that are trying to get along on maybe $12 or $15 per hour salaries, retirees, and especially widows and widows, those that are living on a poverty level scale. Now, as I address the council in this meeting, I try not to minimize the responsibilities and difficulties. You know, your efforts are appreciated, and a good job, you know, we logged, we hold that up. Whatever the task, I appreciate your willingness to put your hand to the town's business. And please, I for one would just love to be able to say, I live in the center of a friendly circle again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Miki. Next on the list, it looks like it's been crossed out, Sherman Martin. Did I read it right, or is it Matney?
I think it's crossed, ma'am.
Crossed, okay, thank you, ma'am. All right, next is Chad Eastep. Chad?
I'll hold, ma'am. I'll sign up on all four sheets to make sure I get the top, so.
Okay, do you want to, well, I'll remove you from this one. Thank you. Okay, so, next, on the sign-up sheets, this is for the cigarette tax. People who want to speak specifically, hopefully, on the cigarette tax. So, first on this list is Laura Malo. Ms. Malo, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Laura Malo, 262 Linwood Drive. I just want to reiterate the poverty level that has risen in the past year in Richlands. If we continue to raise the taxes and fees, we're going to continue to push people outside of town limits. That is counterproductive to what I think all of us sitting here are trying to do, so I hope you guys will consider keeping that. I'm not a smoker, but even the smokers, we want to keep them buying in the town of Richlands. We don't want to push anybody out, because if you can save money, going to Claypool Hill to get cigarettes or a burger, you're going to get your gas, groceries, everything else, one-stop trip. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the cigarette tax is Wanda Low. Wanda? This is on cigarette tax.
I'm not a smoker either, but I just think that it's not right to pick and choose what you tax. I'm waiting on the beer tax, you know? Why not? I just don't see, and I'm not a smoker, and my family doesn't smoke, but when you tax people for cigarettes, as this lady just said, you're going to go somewhere else and get it. I mean, it's just plain old day, you know, that you can go just a little bit down across the line and get your cigarettes. When you tax something, it should be something that covers the whole town, because everybody's going to get the benefit from it. So why would you pick just a few people to pay taxes on something that everybody's going to get? Okay? That's my opinion of it. I just think, you know, that I hate taxes anyway, and I'm sure most everybody does, but I don't think it's fair to everybody to tax one group of people and everybody share the results of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Wanda. Next, Miki Smith on cigarette tax. Miki, did you want to speak?
I don't have anything good to say about cigarettes. I'm a former smoker when I was young. You know, those Virginia Slims that you saw the women smoking?
Very nice.
That's me. Just recently, I was diagnosed with some pulmonary insufficiency, thanks to cigarettes, but I feel like it's not a smart thing to do, to send people to Walmart, or if they live in Raven, you know, there's places there, they can buy cigarettes, they won't come to town for them, you know, and so you're losing what money they would spend, not only just buying that cigarette, say, if they come to the corner mark. You know, they'll buy pop, or, you know, this, that, and the other. So, the businesses really should be here complaining about this, you know? And what about the liquor and the beer? You know, that's a vice. Let's put a big tax on that one, you know? I know it's distorted a lot of lives, and I'd love to see that go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Miki. Okay, looks like we have ended the strikeout for Mr. Matney. That was it? Okay, so next is Emily Smith. Ms. Smith, are you here?
I'm, uh, all of it.
Okay, are you speaking?
No, she's outside.
Uh, Ms. Smith, this is on the cigarette tax. Would you like to speak on the cigarette tax? Are you on general budget?
I'm on the general budget.
Okay, I'll remove your name from this, is that okay? This is, we're trying to do the cigarette tax, you have individual comments. Thank you.
They just had them all laying out there.
Right, it's confusing, and we've not done this before, so anytime something's new, it takes a long time to learn it. So, thank everyone.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Thank everyone for their patience. All right, next Chad Eastep. Chad?
I'll hold for the end.
Hold for the end, okay. So that concludes the public hearing for the cigarette tax. Okay, next is water, sewer, garbage, and electric rates. That's this sheet right here. I will read the names, and we'll accept public comment. Council will accept public comment on these things. All right, so this is for water, sewer, garbage, and electric rates only. First, Laura Malo. Ms. Malo, do you want to speak? Yes, ma'am? Please state your name and address for the record.
Laura Malo, 262 Linwood Drive, Richlands. I've spoken against all of these increases and will continue to do so. I think we had one of the largest, the largest rate increase that Richlands has saw last year, and I'm wondering why we want to continue to burden the citizens further this year, especially with all the confusion going on with the electric. We've been told by you guys that you don't even understand what's going on. It's a complicated process, so if it's so complicated, I mean, how are you guys justifying continuing to raise these rates for us? The sewer rates are going up, I believe, 16%. The sewer rates are going up, I believe, 16%. We don't have copies of the ordinances, so I, but I think it said 16%. The electric rates continuing to go up. You guys voted to raise those rates through 2025. We have not had anybody come in to help out with the grid, the reality, the rationality of keeping that grid, or the rates with the grid. You've got half the town that are paying town rates, and then, you know, they're upset because they're paying the rates to provide services to those of us on AEP, but then those of us on AEP are mad because we're paying taxes into an electric grid we don't even have access to. And until those rates are stabilized, I don't think we want access to that grid. But something's got to be figured out before we just willy-nilly continue to raise the rates.
Next, Summer Minor. Summer, are you here? Come in. Thank you, Summer. If you'll speak for the podium, and do you mind to state your name and address for the record, please?
Summer Minor, and my address is 117 Fairfax Avenue, Richlands, Virginia. I'm just here, I'm simply concerned for the town about these electric issues. Air electric bill, we moved in in the month of November. Never got a bill in December. I contacted the town hall. So I ended up getting a bill in January, $187. They said we used 500 kilowatts of electricity. February, we got a bill for $907. So I said, okay, well, maybe they put all those months together and that's why our bill was so high. March, it was $1,014. Then in April this month, it was $652, and then part of that was a $118 usage fee that they said we used too much electricity in that amount of time. So if you want to know what people are saying about your town, my friend was going to open a business, and I told her about the $5,000 plan, you know, that if you had a good plan, you could get it and get that money to help with your business. And before I said anything to her, she said, no, I have heard about how expensive the electricity is there, and I would never open a business there. I contacted one of my clients who works for social services, and she's over the fuel assistance program. She told me they could not believe how high the Richlands electric bills were, and they had had to step in and help so many people. And she said, I thank God that I do not live in the Town of Richlands. So, I mean, my friend lives in a 7,000-square-foot house on Hidden Valley, I mean, not Hidden Valley, on Airport Road, 7,000 square feet. The highest bill she has received is $526. She has three heat pumps, a three-story home, heated pool, everything. So, I mean, when you, I have heard that y'all have a bad deal, y'all got into a bad electric deal, I have no idea. This is what I'm, I have heard, that there's a bad electric deal, you've signed that you're going to use so much electricity and we haven't used it. So my question is, are you, are they adding those kilowatts onto the people? Because how is it? I have a beauty shop that's part in Richlands, part in Cedar Bluff. I pay taxes to both. Thank God, I'm thankful I do not have the Town of Richlands electric because I could not afford it. But the barber shop at the end of my street, the, his bill was over $800 because he has Town of Richlands. He doesn't use blowjobs or anything. And, I mean, that does include water and sewage, but they don't wash hair, how much water and sewage can they use? My electric that month, where I have AEP, was $213, and I work 12, 14-hour days. But I just want to know that you are realizing what a problem this is. So many people cannot afford it. I mean, we are making it and getting by, but we bought a budget home, a fixer-upper, and we absolutely love this town. We love our street, and we love our house. But we literally, I mean, we could have bought a $400,000 house in the country for what we are paying with the house payment and the electric and water and sewage, which, I mean, y'all have really good water and sewage rates, the best that we've had. But, you know, I really don't think you should, you definitely shouldn't raise them at this point when we don't even really know what's going on with this kilowatt usage thing. So, I know there was one lady on my street, and her bill was $1,268 residential. So, you know, I mean, people just can't afford it, but I just wanted to come because a lot of people can complain about it, but they don't ever come to the meetings. So I wanted to make sure that I came and let y'all know what's going on in the town and what people are saying about our town that we love, this beautiful town. People should want to come here and open their businesses and move here. People don't want to rent homes here because of the electric and stuff. They're scared of what they'll have to pay. So, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Summer. Thank you very much. I will add, this is a very good time. I'm glad to see, and I'm sure members of council are, people here to speak what they feel. Voices of the people are to be heard. Thank you. Donna Gray, is that right, Donna? Donna, if you'll speak from the podium, we'd appreciate it. Do you mind to state your name and address for the benefit of the clerk? Thank you.
My name is Donna Gray. I live at 1619 Sixth Street. I moved here from South Carolina after my husband passed away. I'm a single mom of seven children. There is no way on God's green earth that I can afford this town. When your power bill reaches $850, I micromanaged. I cut off my heat pump. I stopped using my stove in my kitchen. I stopped using lights in my home. I'm running by candles and a propane cooker to feed my children and heat my home. My bill still rises. Why? I also want to know why you say you have a friendly circle, does it smell like sewer every time you walk outside during a rainstorm or after rain? I'm paying for y'all to dispose of this, but yet, why does the town smell like it? There's no way that I want to raise my children in a small town that can sit here and put you in under their thumb just to hurt you and put you in more poverty level than you were when you first started out here. This is crazy. I don't feel like hometowns were like this. I grew up in a small hometown, and I loved it. My town, I could go to my neighbor if I needed anything, they were there because they could afford it. Here, you're scared to go to your neighbor and ask for anything because they can't even afford the food on their own tables, much less their lights to be ran. That's sad. That is so sad. What happened to the old days when you loved thy neighbor and helped each other? There's enough acrimony in this world. Why should we have you guys sitting here telling us that you can't have this, you're going to be penalized if you use this much, or? I mean, come on, guys. It's not meant to be like this. We need to work together. You want to say this is a friendly circle? Be friendly. Be helping, because it's not right.
Thank you, Donna. Thank you. Morgan Earp. Morgan, do you mind to speak from the podium and state your name and address for the record, please?
Morgan Earp, 1618 Sixth Street. I'm not going to lie to you, it's pretty hot in here, and the pressure's really feeling it right now.
Take your time, Morgan.
But we had a couple discussions. Mayor Curry.
Yes, sir.
With this water and sewer increase, the town has a contract with that salmon farm, and the town is supposed to pump water all the way to Southwest or wherever it's at. Now, stated in this contract, it's not even going to make, break even with the town. So what's going to happen? You guys are going to raise our taxes, and we're going to be paying for that salmon farm. Now, that is misappropriation of public funds, and that's illegal. Now, I want you all to think, and I want you all to be clear with these salmon farms or this whole contract. If you can't get somebody in there to renegotiate this, then get somebody who can. You need to be making a profit, all right? Not a profit from the citizens, but private, you're a profit from private industries. And if you can't do that, then this town's lost, or it's going to tie up in legal fees. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Morgan. Wanda Low.
Well, it's hot in here, my hairs went flat, so I'm not sure how much I'll talk this time.
Hope you have a hairdresser around you to make an appointment.
But, you know, that, I apologize to this young lady that moved here and that is experiencing all of this. It is a sad thing. And, you know, with the pandemic, we probably had the highest death rate, and Jeff might can verify this, that we've had in years and years and years. I went back and looked at the funeral home, all of them, some of them had a funeral every day, every single day for the month. For every gentleman that you buried, you left a widow, or vice versa. Most of them had two incomes, and when one died, that left one income. They're faced with all of that now. We have, still have people that haven't gone back to work. Their jobs were discontinued because the businesses were shut down. We have to feel something for our town, and Mayor, you have led this town more than anybody I know of. I have admired you as a mayor. I have. But I must say something. When we have a workshop for a budget, you brainstorm, you negotiate, you exchange this. Doug Ratliff tried to speak during a workshop and talk to some of the department heads, and he wasn't even allowed to do that. And I think it's sad, you know? I think it's sad. And I know, I have to say about Doug, I tell him he don't communicate very well, but that's just me and him, we're friends, you know, and I don't want him to take that as an insult. But, you know, when you sit down, maybe somebody have a good idea and say, well, you know, Bobby, I think I could get that through this bunch a little bit better and save us some money there. And all this water stuff, these poor little boys, some of them don't make $9 an hour, you know? Our little, man, I get, I get upset over it, to be honest with you, because some of them have two jobs to even make it, or they have a husband and wife going to work. One works day shift and one works night shift, and that takes away from their family time. But they have to do that to make it. I mean, it's like, I mean, I'm on a fixed income, and I have a good income, and I, you know, I'm not complaining for myself, but I work with the poor a whole lot, and I see stuff that I, it just breaks my heart. My sister's sitting right over here, she's 81 years old, she's a widow. When these bills came out last month, late, she got hers 11 days late on the 11th of the month, she wrote her check and dropped it back in the mail, and this town did not get it by the 15th, so they sent her a late notice. They charged her a $24 late fee, and she had to write out another check and send to them, and then when they got the first check, they sent it back to her. What a disgrace. What a disgrace that you would get your bills out that late, and I think John admitted that they had done something, had an error or something, and maybe transmitted it down there, whatever. This is the kind of stuff, we have to have some empathy and some compassion for these people. These old people have nobody to speak for them. I mean, they have nobody. I'd almost call this a mob because everybody is upset, and I'm sure everybody reads Facebook, that's the going thing now. But, and I don't like everything on there, and I don't say too much on there because I know they get me. But anyway, I just think that it's a time to please. Don't raise nothing unless you just have to. You know, don't do it, don't do it to the people, if you love them. I would say, and I would strictly guess, and I wrote to the state to try to get this information before tonight, and they didn't get back with me in time, I would say 70% of the people in Richlands are on fixed income. I don't think that's too high to say that. At least 70% of the people are on some type of fixed income, or have lost a spouse and only have one income. So that's the kind of stuff we want to fix? You know, we don't want to take more from them and just keep them beat down, and like Summer said, nobody wants to come here. I mean, they, everybody knows about us now. And so if electrical, if we have problems in that, and we've signed contracts to take so much, we need to fix it. And until you fix it, quit raising it. Just absolutely quit raising it. I mean, it's that easy. Just don't raise the doggone stuff, say, we're going to let this thing flow for a year, and let's try to get this straightened out. That's all, that fixes it.
Thank you. Thank you, Wanda. Okay, and thank you very much. Next, water, sewer, garbage, and electric rates. Mickey, did you want to speak on this one?
I just think, Wanda, it was too logical. I was wondering, I know Cedar Bluff gets water from us. Did their water rate increase?
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Cedar Bluff, do they not get water from us, Richlands?
I think they do.
Were their rates increased?
I can't tell you. The manager would be able to explain that better than I.
All right. You see, there's.
Go ahead, I'm listening.
Yeah, okay. There is things you can search out, ways you can save money. You know, I've balanced the budget in our home a lot over the years, and, you know, you have to conserve, you know, when the income comes down, my husband's been on strikes sometimes, and only one income you're coming in, you have to cut back, you know? I've heard nothing about cutting back on your budgets, nothing. And I know it could be done. All I've ever heard is, you know, increase, more, more for our salary, more for this, a new department added. I don't know how much the television advertisement bring is beneficial to this town, but the budget sure is high for it, and do we profit in any way from that? I don't know. It's questioned. I think about it, others should, and I just wonder how much thought is given, you know, to things like that.
Thank you, Mickey. Chad, are you ready yet? This is water, sewer, garbage. You going to wait for the, okay. So we'll take Chad off. Jeff Casey, this is on water, sewer, garbage, and electric. This is Jetty's son.
I'm Jeff Casey. I live at 215 Center Street, Richlands, Virginia. I've lived here most of my life. I was born in Richlands, with the exception of a few years that we lived at Claypool Hill when I was growing up. Eventually moved back to town. I love this place. I've been involved in this town in a lot of ways that most people are not familiar with. I did, for years, I surveyed, and I worked on various projects, water and sewer utility projects, all over the country. And I worked on projects here. I worked at this, I worked on a sewer treatment plant down here, I worked at the water treatment plant over here. I know about the intricacies that take place here, and I know about some of the complications that you run into. Now, my question is this, and I understand there's a lot of frustration here because people are still asking, why are our rates going up? Why this, why that? And there's no answer. And I think that's what we need to find, is an answer, we need to find a common ground. Now, my question is this, last year, the Town of Richlands received a $10 million grant to upgrade their water sewer, their sewer treatment plant at Doran. And I know in the past, some of those projects require matching funds along the way. They go in phases, and as you reach those phases, you have to match those funds. So my question is this, does this have anything to do with some of the rate increases and the step increases that we're talking about? Is this something that we agreed to? Is this something that cannot be helped? And if so, we need to examine that. We need to examine what's going on. We need to examine what's going on. I do know that my electric rate is higher than it's ever been in the town of Richlands. By my calculation, we're paying $12.74 a kilowatt hour. While AEP is paying $10.89 a kilowatt hour. That's a dollar and 81 cents a kilowatt hour different for the same thing. For the same thing. Now, what you have to keep in mind, and I am, I, I'm privileged in a lot of ways. But what you have to keep in mind is that our town has shrunk over the last few years. Our property values have gone down by 30% over the last four years. Which creates a shortfall on your budgets. All the way around, we lose. Now, uh, what I'm asking you is, with, with the electric rates being so much different. Where you have a problem is that the majority of the people living in this town are living on fixed incomes. In fact, I looked it up. Based on the average income in the town of Richlands, the majority of people here would qualify under HUD regulations for assistance on their utilities for up to a 25% discount. Now, think about that. That's a chunk of money. It's a big chunk of money. And I think what we need is not, uh, an excuse, we need an answer. We need some long-term planning, and we need some answers to these questions. Because people are struggling. If you own rental property, those people move out, it puts you in a bind. And I know a lot of people in this town that do, that are suffering for that reason. Um, I do own rental property. I'm no longer renting it, I'm using it for my own purposes. So I said, I'm fortunate. But I'm saying, we can make this work, but we need to have answers. No one is going to leave here happy without an answer. Why? And what can we do to resolve these problems?
Thank you, Jeff. Okay. That concludes the public hearing for water, sewer, garbage, and electric rates. And the final piece is...
Before we, before we go on, could I give them some answers why the electric is high?
Can you wait? You can, but if we can get this, we can go, and we'll have a little time for comeback. I'm just trying to hear.
Could I answer after this?
I think it's appropriate.
Okay.
But, let's, let's move on here, okay? All right, next. Um, public hearing signup sheet for 2022-2023 budget only. Uh, first on Laura Mallow. Ms. Mallow, did you want to speak on this one? Okay, thank you. If you don't mind, just say your name and address, please.
Laura Mallow, 262 Linwood Drive, Richlands. Um, as I've spoken on every increase right now, um, something's got to be done about the budget. First off, I do not think we should be having this public hearing with only two members of council. Uh, as someone said before, uh, we're missing four members. We don't have a quorum here, and it might not be required for a public hearing. But we're going to ask four people to come back into this room and make decisions on this budget who did not hear a word of anything that any of us have spoken. Um, so I think we need to have another public hearing and do it efficiently when we have a full council. I don't think these decisions should be made lightly without a full council. I don't think anything should be increasing the way that you guys are increasing the taxes and fees and utilities. And as everyone before me has said, we are waiting for answers. And I don't think anyone enjoys taxes. But no one is going to have an issue paying their fair share if we know why we're paying this, where this money's going. We're seeing our town employees get raises, they're getting taken care of, our roads are getting repaired. And we see what's going on with the budget. So I'm asking you guys to please have another public hearing when we have a full council.
Thank you. Uh, Blake, Blake Ray. Blake, would you state your name and address for the council?
Blake Ray, 426 Buchanan Street. So actually, everything that I was going to talk about last night, or tonight, has already been addressed. But I've got some numbers, facts, and figures. Because I think the heart of why everybody's here is symptomatic of another issue. And the rate increases, fundamentally, we are not a growing community anymore. Simple as that. Um, you're seeing a mass population exodus happen. So here's some numbers. Compared to $67,521, which is the average household income in America, the town of Richlands is at $28,970. The average home price in America is 374,900 compared to 83,155 here. Now, we can all sit and have a conversation about, you know, what do we do in the short term? But the problem happened 20 years ago around, we didn't start addressing these problems, and we've got to start doing that now. Here's why. $430 million. That is the number that is, excuse me, on deposit, according to the latest FDIC insurance report here in Richlands, Virginia. Now, why is that significant? Because over the next decade, you have a serious problem coming, and nobody's talking about it. There is a severe generational wealth shift that's going to happen from baby boomers to Gen X and millennials. Now, if you look at the average age of the person in this room, there's not too many people under the age of 45, and there's very few under the age of 30, with the exception of the scholastic bull kids. So the problem then becomes, if we don't start addressing, how do we create jobs that bring that income level closer to $65,000? And how do we get housing prices up? By building new homes, which by the way, goes back to creating jobs for people to have income to build homes. Then we are going to see a major problem in the next 10 years. And that's going to be insolvency within the financial institutions, who can't then lend money because the deposits have went out because everybody was forced to go find a job. That's the problem. And what we know as Richlands, over the next 10 years, will cease to exist. And I don't want that to happen. Because, you know, I travel a lot for work, I live here four days a week, but I want to be here full-time. This is the best place to raise a family. My niece and nephew are here. They have a future that I am invested in. And the problem that we have to solve is changing the narrative. From the bickering and back and forth shortcomings of what's happening... First of all, I deleted Facebook three days ago. Best thing I've ever done. Because I'm not hearing all the chatter, and I get to focus on what's really the problem. And, you know, I was in St. Louis at the beginning of the week. And I want to leave you with a quote. Because this, I was sitting there, and this was extremely... I mean, it was just eye-opening, because it's what's happening here, because we're arguing about short-term issues and not looking for long-term solutions. And that quote was, "If you're scared to adapt and change, how are you going to feel when you become irrelevant?" Because over the next decade, we are facing irrelevance. And we've got to do a better job. We've got to work with the county, we've got to work with the state officials that we have to come up with a game plan to fix the job market in southwest Virginia. We can't be worried about bringing people here if we can't keep people here. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Blake.
Thank you.
Can I speak now?
Uh, no, we're not through yet. Okay, next, Wanda Lo. Wanda, on the general budget.
Well, I agree a lot with what Blake said, and I'll have a little saying that all of you have probably heard. Without a vision, people perish. And we have lost our vision in Richlands, there is no doubt about that. I have great confidence in the fish farm that's coming. And the reason I do is because it will provide a lot of good jobs, hopefully. And it is in the making, and it's been in the making for a long time, and it'll be the largest one in the world. And hopefully, we'll have enough people, you know, we, 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 we've joined three different counties, including ourselves, to be able to reach out and get the people to come in and to work, that we couldn't be prosperous, Buchanan County and Russell County, and us working together. And, um, then, then maybe we will see some stuff grow. I think Blake is exactly right. When you look at the statistics, it is, it's so discouraging. It is very discouraging. And I live in Hidden Valley, and I don't say that bragging, I just got a good deal on a house when I bought it. I am, I came from a poor family, I had eight kids, raised in a four-room house with no running water, no bathroom. So you know, I know what that's like to be poor. We ate off the land, and therefore, you know, we, we were happy, we had love, and we had a lot to eat, and that's all we knew. I know what it's like to be there. But I know just in Hidden Valley, we started getting houses that were approved by HUD. Well, you know what HUD is, and it's for lower-income people. And I have to say, they don't have the money sometimes to keep that up. So what does that do? That downgrades the value of your homes, you know, if you're in that area. So we don't want that, I don't want that for sure. I mean, I'm getting old, and I might want to sell my house one day. And I'd at least like to get back what I got in it, or what I gave for it, I should say, maybe. But we can't do that. Going the route we're going, we just cannot do that. There's nothing to cause us to grow. There's not a thing in the world. Brandon Buskel, who is the local dentist here, I thought he had a great idea on that Facebook thing. He said, Mr. O'Donnell ought to make a video and explain to everybody why in the world we need all these raises. If you know why he needs those, then we might accept that better, you see? You can't please people when you got them in the dark, won't turn the light on, let them see what's going on, you see? So I think that's one of the biggest problems, is communication. And let us understand why we need to raise all that stuff. I, I have a low power bill, I, I pay $138 a month AEP in Hidden Valley. I don't have a big house, but I, that's what I pay. My largest bill was $255. So I know there is a problem with the Richlands' power system. And I'm not sure what the answer is, because I know absolutely nothing about it, except that it's high. So, you know, when you look at the budget, I worked for the postal service for 25 years. I had a budget to go through, and I'm going to tell you something. In 25 years at the postal service, we never got a budget that was not cut from the one, the previous budget. Never, ever, ever. And we'd say, Lord, they only give us $20, buy supplies, how in the world we going to do that? Well, I tell you how you do that. You start managing your stuff, you know, you don't waste stuff. I'd take paper and write all over on the front side, flip it over on the other side, and do that backside, you know? You do things to make it work. And it's, it's, it hurt you, remember when they had that little cleanup in Richlands? And you had a slogan, and little Ethel Sisk won it, "Clean till it helps." Well, you know what, "Cut till it helps." That's my slogan, you know, "Cut till it helps." She won on that "Clean till it helps," and it was to clean up Richlands. So now, let's just cut till it helps, you know? That's a good slogan, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Wanda. Okay, next, Mickey. Do you want to speak on this particular topic? The budget.
I don't know if I could add anything to what Wanda said. Um, but that was a good thought about "Cut till it helps," very good. Um, I've not seen, I have to say, I've not seen much of that mentioned about cutting budgets. It, you know, and, and, and we are in the dark about why there's been all these increases. Um, maybe if we understood it a little bit better, there wouldn't be such an outcry about it. Um, and, um, I guess that's, uh, that just says it in a nutshell, "Cut till it helps." Please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mickey. Okay, uh, looks like the next person scratched out. Chad, it's your turn.
I'll go very last.
It is, you're last. Oh, uh, well, we need to add you Emily Smith. I'll add you. You're not last, Chad, you'll be next to last, okay?
I have my house, so...
Emily Smith. Go ahead, Chad.
Well, Chad, you step 1201 Crestwood Drive. First and foremost, I'd like to say that my comments are to the town as a whole, not any individual in here. I know most of you, talk to most of you. Um, they're just things that's on my mind that I'd like to say. Speaking for myself, I'm not affiliated with anybody or speaking for anybody. Why is everybody abandoning ship? I mean, my comments are, I've grouped them all. You can take your notes and put them in which order you want. But I was wanting to speak in front of the council in the meeting, but I've done heard Doug make a motion to cancel, so I'm going to say it here.
You're welcome.
Get it going. I mean, why is everybody abandoning the ship on this town? I mean, you got council members walking out. Um, you know, you had the mayor resign. Logan Plaster resigned. Tim Taylor retired earlier than he previously wanted to go. And at the same time, Adrian left. And, you know, all this, I, you know, I don't know if it's related or not, but I know from the video that I saw, Adrian was visibly upset when Logan had asked for an audit. So, but it's just, you know, Marion and Richard, two days in a row succession, they resigned. It leaves all of us thinking that, um, it's something smelling right up in here. It, uh, I don't know if there's problems within the council, problems within the town. But you don't have that much turnover if everything's kosher. A few years ago, I used to attend meetings regularly. And very few years ago, it was announced that we had a surplus in our budget. Well, now here we are, raising rates, raising taxes. And I agree with the gentleman that we do pay taxes on two different ra, you know, two different entities. We, um, we never get to own anything that we've paid for. Once you pay it off, you pay the bank for it, then you rent it the rest of your life. And, you know, our rent's a little high right now, if you don't know. Um, so I'm saying to the town of Richlands, we're not your piggy bank. You need to cut deep, look at things going on within this town. Um, anyone with a set of eyes can look around this town and see that there is waste. There's waste everywhere. I mean, I'm not saying everything is waste, but I mean, there's things that we need, things that we want. In my household, we do things that we need first, our wants come later. Wants don't need to be ahead of needs. Um, going back to the electrical apartment, does it pay for itself? Does it, I mean, if they buy a truck, the town of Richlands has to buy a truck. The electric does not pay for itself, it's not a self-sufficient entity. True. It's not feasible. It, it's not feasible staying in the electrical business if we can't pay as we go. If we're Robin Peter to pay Paul, it, it's not good business. And everybody in here, most of you are a business owner or work in a business, so you know what I'm talking about. Um, another thing coming is, last year, there was a big bruhaha about 911 communication. About the dispatchers, this, that, the other. I don't know if you know it or not, but everybody that has a communication device, landline phone, cell phone, whatever, you pay a 911 regulatory fee. That goes to staff, that all goes to Tazza County. So here we are again, we're paying double for something that we've already got. It, it's redundant. We, I mean, don't want to see anybody lose... We, I mean, don't want to see anybody lose any jobs, so I'm just stating facts. If I'm not mistaken, that the sheriff had agreed to take those employees up to 911 center so nobody would lose their retirement. They get the same retirement. So, it's not, it's not about throwing somebody to the streets. They were going to be taken care of, and that's the money we could have saved. That's the money we wouldn't have raised rates over, wouldn't have raised taxes. And I'm not inciting any wrongdoings. I think we just need sharp enough pencils. We need to get down to basics, but wants on one side, needs on the other. Feel your needs and get your wants if you got them. But we don't need the funding. I mean, it's just, you need to look at how you're spending every citizen's money. My kids, they grew up, I taught them to watch their dollars, and they're both successful now. Some of their friends were not taught that, and they have nothing. Even though they got good-paying jobs, they have nothing because they weren't taught to look after their money. So, with that, I say that I encourage every citizen here, every citizen in town, to implore you all to do a forensic audit, not only for last year, go back five years, see what's going on. You'll see where your money's going. And, you know, I think five years will probably show you. I mean, we, from what I understand, you've got employees that left recently that are now consultants from the town. If they did not want to be employed here, why are we paying them to come back? The people you hired, are they not competent? That you have to have somebody come watch after them? So, that's all I got. I mean, and you can sort those any way you want to, but I've had my say. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad.[1109.04][1109.04](APPLAUSE). Okay, and we have Emily Smith. Emily? Emily, do you mind to state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Emily Smith. My address is 351 Honey Rock Road, Cedar Bluff, but I am a property owner in Richlands on Burnett Street. I own a mobile home park and also on Mitch Lane near Oxford Squares. So, I have a very vested interest in the town of Richlands for the behalf of my tenants. I love my tenants dearly. They're wonderful people. Some of them are retired on a very tight fixed income, and some of them have jobs. So, the things I would like to address today is, of course, the power rate that has become astronomical to some of these tenants. As everyone knows, some mobile homes are not insulated as well as others, and we are doing what we can to fill that void on the insulation to help their power rates as much as possible. I had one tenant who works very hard, who raises two kids, and she works at a nursing home. She makes a little bit more than minimum wage. She did not qualify for any financial assistance that the town hall provided for her power bill. She sent me a picture with no late fees. Her power bill was $787 for one month. I was visited her home several times. We put plastic over the windows, thermal curtains up, which I tried to help her pay for to try and help her ease the pain. She had to pay her rent and payments. Now, of course, I can help her do that. I've been very blessed. But how do we expect these people to stay here? She is looking for a home outside of Richlands. So, therefore, we're going to lose the revenue from her and the revenue from myself on the rental property. And if we are a profitable power company, we're going to lose that revenue as well because I won't be able to find anyone back in that spot. So, out of all of my mobile home parks, I ask that we address the issue of the power and the water and the sewer and what's going on with these rates so that we can keep renters here. Without people, there is no money to be made. I prefer our system for our taxes. Let's look at this budget. I love the cut to it helps. That's great. We have a beautiful town. At Christmas, the trees, the lights, the light poles, the garden committee, I think, through the Qantas clubs helps with that. It is beautiful. I recently just joined the Qantas club. I want to help this town grow. I want to be a big part player in the town. But we've got to do something so that everybody doesn't leave us. It's like bad parenting when your children move out and they go away and you can't give them to come back. We don't want to be that bad parent. It is our responsibility to take care of them. What we're looking at also is real estate property taxes. You know, those are going up too. That's fine. Our renters do not own that land. I do. But how does businesses work? Anybody that's owned anything, when you raise it on me, guess where it's going next? It rolls downhill. That's another increase on these people. So, even if they're renting, they're going to be paying that tax as well. They're going to be paying the real estate taxes. They're going to be paying the sewer tax, their trash pickup. We need to make the assistance that was available. I had to call the town myself to find out what assistance was available to help my tenants. Now, I did have tenants who are on fixed incomes who did qualify for the assistance. Do you know, they didn't know it existed to call? I had an elderly lady on a fixed income with no power. Her power got cut off. She did not know the assistance existed. That is scary that they're in a home with no power and no one to call to help. I can't just pay their power bills. Not that blessed, not yet, anyway. But as a town, if we're going to have these funds to help them, we need to make them more aware. These elderly people don't have somebody to speak for them. They don't have anybody to ask. They don't know who to help. But we also shouldn't be eliminating the working class because we need that working class. They're who buys the fast food. They're who eats at the local restaurant that we just opened up in Richlands Town that we're blessed to have. I like to come out and eat in town and stroll around and look. We need businesses back in these empty buildings. Let's look at these property owners of some of these empty buildings. I once read a story about a town that there was a small fine, I guess you would call it, on an empty building in town to encourage them to not raise the rent so high that it couldn't be occupied. Some sales tax revenue is better than none. Let's look at other options to get this town back prosperous. Let's make it a fun day to stroll through town. Let's look at some of these things that are available to do it and make it where the people can survive, to live here, so that we can continue to grow. Exactly what Blake said on his scenarios earlier, we will, it'll just vanish and go away. I don't know if y'all look at Buchanan County very much, but the town of Grundy has to keep growing their zip codes where they've now encompassed half of Hurley just to make their town stay alive. Is that what Richlands is going to have to do next? And we're bordered, you know? We got Cedar Bluff. We're right at their door. If they can survive and they're doing well, let's see what's going on. Let's do something similar. Let's make it where our tenants, my tenants, who may not be here today, can survive and stay in Richlands. I want them happy. I need them to be able to afford to live here. That's all.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you.[1425.66][1425.66](APPLAUSE). Thank you very much, everyone. Doug wants to say something, and I believe you have some time here, Doug. Just if you can keep it as best you can before you do. As the mayor, I just want to say thank everyone for coming. The people's voices need to be heard, they always, because it's people power, and that's what we are representing. Thank you very much. Doug?
If, I just want to say a few words. If you look at Leamden, Bluefield, and Tazewell, their budgets, if you study them, they operate on hype what we do. They spend their money wisely. What Richlands doesn't have a problem of money, it has mismanagement problems. They're not managing their money correctly. To give you an example, out of the electric fund, what's causing it to go sky-high? The town is taking around $600,000 off the top. We have a wonderful electric system, and we could, it does great, and we could have the lowest rates in Virginia. But right off the top, the town takes $600,000 and moves it to the finance department. Of course, that's going to cause your rates to go up. They'll use it on some other project that they want to spend it on. As far as your water, if you check the budget, they're taking $100,000 off the top. What are they doing with it? Moving it to the finance office and moving it and doing the projects that they want to. What's happening to the garbage? They're moving $100,000 from it to the finance office. That's what's why your rates are going up because it's mismanaged from the finance department.
Thank you, Doug.
Okay, I'm not through.
All right, thank you.[1548.16][1548.16](APPLAUSE).
I'll give you another prime example. One lady spoke of what salaries are going up. They're going up exorbitant. The council never cuts a budget. It's always hires more personnel and pays them more. I'm not picking on these fellows in here, but I'll give you a prime example. Our attorneys, and I'm not picking on you, I don't mean to. I'm just giving an example. Two years ago, we paid the attorneys $45,000 a year. Do you know what the budget is this year? $120,000. Okay? We're going from $45,000. I love them, but not that much. We're going from $45,000 to $120,000 in the budget. That's what's happening, these exorbitant fees that they're paying these people. Like she said, we've got people making minimum wage, and then we've got people at the top making three times what they should make. As far as the town attorney, excuse me, we paid Tim Taylor $90,000. We're paying the current town manager $115,000. Okay?
Just a minute, please.
All the.
Just a minute.
Everybody.
Hold on a minute, Doug. I must say something. We, he is saying his say, but I'm sorry, Pam, we can't have discourse. This is a public hearing. We must hear only. He wants his say. You may have your say, but you'll have to do that in regular council. Thank you. Go ahead, Doug.
Lost my chance.
Okay. Do you want to do it in regular council?
Pardon? Pardon? Yeah. I'm saying, thank you. We need to look at the budget. I've been here 20 years. I've never seen the budget cut. They always hand it to you and say, "Take it or leave it," and we can't do anything about it. If, if the other towns can live without sponging off their electric system, their garbage system, and their water system, Richlands should. About eight years ago, we had the lowest electric rates in Virginia, believe it or not. But they changed it, and they started dipping into it and moving the money from the electric department over to the finance office and doubled or tripled salaries in the finance office, a lot of them, not the poor workers in town, but people at the top. As someone mentioned, the 911. I've been on for five years trying to get them to do away with dispatch because it's a waste. That's 300, over $300,000 that we've wasted for the last five years. But they want to hold on to the dispatch, I guess for ego, that, "Oh, we got to dispatch." Do you know how many dispatch systems there are in Virginia? One. You know who it is? Virginia. Every other system's council has been smart and did away with it. But poor old Virginia, I mean, poor old Richlands has plenty of money. They don't have to worry. They can get it from you. The only people that are getting paydays are these people here and at the top. You're being used.
Thank you, Doug. Okay.[1761.54][1761.54](APPLAUSE).
Get them off the board.
This public hearing is closed, and when, let's give it five minutes for a breather. It's warm, and then I have my personal comments to make before we have council.[1785.66][1785.66](CROWD CHEERS).